Projector, we're here for our town hall meeting. And I just want to start off by saying good afternoon to everybody. Preacher Suttles, thank you. There you go. There you go. Thank you so much for blessing our meeting and that blessing our food. And I want to thank the Tennessee State Community Council, Sevier County Division, for coordinating this event and then our rally tomorrow in regular Texas, Tennessee. I'm in Texas quite a bit, so excuse me if I get those T's rolling together. I am Xena Cratchall, and I am Executive Director of National Judicial Conduct and Disability Law Project, Inc. I'll tell you a bit more about that organization in a few moments, but first I want to introduce two of my fellow co-founders of the Law Project. First, our Board President and my husband, Mr. Rodney Logan. And last but not least is our Deputy Director, Dr. Andrew Lee Jackson. We live just outside of Chicago, and I'm delighted to have them both here with me today in Tennessee. Delighted to have you all come out. And if you have noticed, and we pretty much have a rendition of it up on the screen, the flyers for today's meeting are asking the question, "Whose side are you on?" And that's the question that we have for Tennessee State Judiciary. But before we get into the questions that we have for others, I want to tell you a bit about who we are. I'm a... There you go. As you know, as I indicated, Rod, my husband and Rod, Andrew and I are board members and administrators of National Judicial Conduct and Disability Law Project, Inc. That's a real mouthful, but you see it up on the screen. And we usually refer to the organization as The Law Project. It's a nonprofit legal reform organization, and we call it The Law Project not only because our actual name is such a mouthful, but also because there are many groups, multiple groups, programs, and initiatives under the NJCDLP umbrella. Our key organizations, as you can see on the screen on the far left, is the National Forum on Judicial Accountability. We're the home of the community forums on judicial accountability. We believe in getting off the internet and coming together with our neighbors in our community, so that's why we spotlight the community forums on judicial accountability. But our name of the organization is the National Forum on Judicial Accountability, also known as the FORT. Then another one of our main organizations is POPULAR, as you can see featured in the middle icon. It stands for Power Over Poverty Under Laws of America Restored. Now, POPULAR is also a reform organization, a national reform organization, but it focuses on all aspects of America's legal system, from cops on the street to private attorneys, disciplinary agencies, all aspects of America's legal system in addition to the judiciary. So, the FORT focuses on the judiciary, judicial accountability, and so does POPULAR, but POPULAR will be more inclined to address over beyond the judiciary, other aspects, prosecutor reform, that sort of thing. Now, and finally, one of our main affiliates is called OAK, Organizations Associating For the Kind of Change America Really Needs. OAK addresses... even though the name highlights organizations, the members of OAK are individuals and also NGOs, organizations, and we have a variety of good concerns that we generally describe as good government advocacy. But OAK addresses those concerns from the standpoint of U.S. and international human rights. So, the three groups come together, and between the three of them, we're able to address the judiciary, all aspects of... other aspects of the legal system under POPULAR. And then OAK comes in and looks at it from the standpoint of human rights, and it even will advocate on an international level. Now, you're looking at probably the only human in the world who keeps up with all these different groups and all the names. It's a real jigsaw puzzle. Sometimes I call it an alphabet soup because all of these groups, the FORT, POPULAR, OAK, I'm probably the only person who keeps up with what they all mean. But these are part of The Law Project. And what I want to make clear is today, the groups that are really leading the charge are part of POPULAR. We have the Plead for Justice Program and Golden Badge. Now, POPULAR sponsors the Plead for Justice Program, which... and the Plead for Justice Program, we're using that to question the constitutionality of America's plea bargaining system. We're questioning in that too many innocent people are left with little choice but to plead guilty. Are they face a very good chance of being wrongfully convicted? And we're not going to... perhaps during question and answering and open dialogue, we could talk about why there's such a good chance of wrongful conviction, but there is. And that's... it was through the Plead for Justice Program that we met Sevier County resident Mark P. Lipton. He became part of the Law Project family through the Plead for Justice Program. He came to us with his story that he, in his view, had been wrongfully convicted. He had been offered an opportunity to take a plea, but he insisted on his innocence, went to trial, and ultimately did face a conviction. So, that's how we met... that's how we got to Tennessee. That's how we met Mr. Lipton, through the Plead for Justice Program. And based on his legal difficulties, we went on to create the Golden Badge, which is an international union of current and former law enforcement officials who face retaliation for doing their job. Now, POPULAR may challenge law enforcement misconduct. We hear a lot of talk about police brutality, other forms of law enforcement obstruction, but with regard to Golden Badge, we are wanting to encourage law enforcement who aren't doing it, trying to do the right thing, trying to uphold the law. And that's why we created Golden Badge for those people who are facing retaliation, even though that they are part of the legal system. Now, Golden Badge is a new organization, but we had the good fortune of teaming up with the National Police Defense Foundation. Now, that is a group that has about 200,000 members and has been around for decades, so we had the good fortune of getting their support, and they are very much a part of spearheading us being here today, even though they're representatives out of, I think it's New Jersey, somewhere out on the East Coast. We won't be able to have anybody here today because of some scheduling conflicts. Now, since I have it... I've set out somewhat just actually a small piece of our network of nonprofit good government advocacy groups. The question becomes, what do all of these groups have in common? And I guess one of the ways you could describe it is saying that we are good government advocates. Okay? And I'm pretty sure that most people would agree, good government is what most Americans want. But one way or another, many of us have gotten convinced that when you're up against serious waste, fraud, and abuse, average Americans lack power to bring about good government. A lot of people think that. I interact with people across this country almost all on a daily basis, and again, even though most Americans, I would think, want good government, many of us have gotten convinced that if the problem is serious waste, fraud, and abuse, we've gotten convinced, and arguably for good reason, that that's something good government is something that average Americans really lack power to bring about. We begin to think, a lot of us, that the best we can do is try to elect good public officials and then hope for the best. And when you're up against serious misconduct, some serious form of corruption, there are a lot of Americans who would think that that's the best we can do is look to our officials and hope for the best. I'm sure if we fill this room with people who have struggled for justice, average Americans, people who have battled serious government misconduct, again, I'm communicating with these people on a regular basis, on a daily basis, people who have, average Americans, who have tried to overcome even blatant injustice. If those people were in the room, of course, this room, as big as it is, probably wouldn't hold all of them. In fact, I'm sure it would, just based on the people I interact with on a regular basis. We will hear how long they have struggled for justice. We will hear their very real obstacles, and some of us may be tempted to think, oh, boy, this is a really despairing situation. Maybe it is impossible for average Americans to bring about good government. But America was not created to be a country that denies its people justice. That's something that we should keep in mind. That's something that people are having a hard time remembering, given the difficulties that they're facing. But one of the things, the reason why we came here, because we're outside of Chicago today, is to remind everybody that America was not created to be a country that denies its people justice. When average Americans find it nearly impossible to overcome serious abuse, and that's whether it's in your home, on your job, or in some government facility, when average Americans, people are not celebrities, people are not wealthy, when we find it nearly impossible to overcome serious abuse, our government is not functioning properly, is problematic, is malfunctioning. And it may be that we... the government is good, but it's just simply not doing its job properly. It may be some changes that need to be made in order for us to... for it to do what it should do. It may be that we have good government, but we have some bad people who are abusing their power, are simply incompetent to do what's necessary to bring about the justice that as Americans we have come to expect. Now, I'm not suggesting, and of course, common sense makes evident, that government is not supposed to protect us from everything that's unpleasant in life. I mean, you know, we stub our toes. We have bad marriages. We have bad business deals. Government can't protect us from everything that happens, that goes wrong in life. However, when any of us have a right, a legal right, that's violated, we are generally, as Americans, entitled to a fair and an impartial consideration of our claims, a fair and impartial consideration of our claims. So, the concept is that good government is supposed to lead to good outcomes, and in America, that translates into fair results brought about by impartial officials. That's the basic formula. Now, in my view, what we're here to do is consider whether a recent ruling by the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility, whether that ruling, that determination lines up with good government. Many of you know the outcome of 2009 altercation between Mr. Lipton, Sevier County resident Mark Lipton, and his neighbor, Nathan. Now, I want to talk a bit about that outcome, but we're going to talk about it, at least my presentation, we're going to talk about it just enough to try to establish that it was a questionable outcome, questionable enough to justify us wondering whether the citizens of Tennessee are experiencing good government in the face of what happened to Mark. The altercation that he had with his neighbor, I believe, was in 2009. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, remember, I had talked in terms of good government leading to good outcomes, so you may be wondering, well, why am I shifting focus and talking about questionable outcomes as opposed to good outcomes? Well, the point that I'm making is that this meeting was not convened so that we could prove that what has happened in Mark's case is a bad outcome per se. Mark, I hope you understand, many people need to have their say, and many agencies need to do their thing before we can reach a final conclusion that that was a bad outcome. So, we're not here to so much convince everyone that Mark is innocent, even though I believe he is, that Mark was wrongfully convicted, even though personally I believe that he is. But our organization, we didn't convene this meeting to try to convince everyone in the context of the meeting that Mark is innocent, that he was wrongfully convicted, and let me try to explain why. It took multiple investigations, several attorneys. Mark had a trial. His case is on appeal. Our coalition of groups came together, and we filed a complex disciplinary complaint against Mark's prosecutors. It was about 15 pages and, you know, scores of several documents and exhibits. Then, the Law Project, we were instrumental in launching a national reform campaign, a prosecutor accountability and whistleblower protection reform campaign. That campaign had me in Washington, D.C. last month at a summit that was sponsored by the Center for Prosecutor Integrity. I was there last month. We're here this month. Later this month, I'm going to be going back to Washington, D.C. for the 2014 Whistleblower Summit on Civil and Constitutional Rights. I'm recruiting three experts to join me in developing a scholarly analysis of Mark's situation, his legal difficulties. We've already sent out a request to the Department of Justice to investigate the decision to prosecute Mark and to determine whether there was a criminal violation of his federal rights associated with the decision to... not necessarily to charge him, but to take the case to conviction, which could have happened by a plea deal or by going to trial. We asked the Department of Investigation to come in and see if that decision involved a criminal violation of Mark's rights. This Friday, a delegation of us are going to meet with one of Mark's state legislators, as well as two U.S. legislators. We've already mailed the related information to another member of Congress, Representative Phil Rowe. We mailed that material off to him because there won't be anybody in his office available to speak with us, whereas we're going to speak personally with State Representative Dale Carr, and then we're going to meet with two of Mark's senators, I believe, U.S. senators. I've already asked the American Bar Association to come in and weigh in on this situation, asking the question of whether prosecutors were ethical in their decision to go ahead and take this case to trial. So, why am I going through all of this detail? The point I'm trying to make is that the process of coming to a final conclusion as to whether Mark experienced, you know, what happened to him in 2009, the altercation between Mark and his neighbor in 2009, whether we have come to a good outcome, that process is complicated. If we're going to be fair and impartial, we need to let everybody who has a say in this come in and weigh in on it. That's a long process. That's not something that we can do in the context of a 45-minute town hall meeting. You know, we talk about as average Americans, when we present our claims, we want a fair and impartial consideration of our claims. And so, what that's... part of the people we're reaching out to are prosecutors, law enforcement officials. One of the women who is going to join me in doing a scholarly analysis of the situation is a former federal law enforcement officer. She's also a whistleblower who now is a businessperson that specializes in ethics in business. So, we've got all... and one of the people that I've reached out to join me in the scholarly analysis of this case is a former Tennessee prosecutor in another county. So, we want to make sure that everybody has had a chance to look at the facts, look at how this altercation, you know, played out between Mark and his neighbor, and weigh in and give their indication of whether they think that this was handled properly. So, we're not going to try to prove all of that in the context of this meeting, but we are here to look at whether we seem to be having good government that's happening here in Tennessee, specifically in light of the way the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility looked at this matter and how they move on it. What I'm going to be emphasizing today is that Mark, as many of you know, is a former deputy sheriff, with, as far as I'm aware, an unblemished disciplinary record, okay? As far as I know. After leaving the Sevier County Sheriff's Department, Mark tried to get the FBI to investigate his former boss for allegedly covering up a DUI arrest of his. The county attorney general, Mr. Dunn, would not prosecute the sheriff based on Mark's work and whatever evidence that he had that was available as to whether this sheriff, Sheriff Seals, was instrumental in stopping the completion of the arrest and getting rid of all evidence of the arrest. The FBI did look into it. I understand it was a preliminary investigation, and the DA, Mr. Dunn, made a determination not to go ahead and prosecute the sheriff based on what Mr.... what Mark had made available, the information that he had available. Now, within months of Attorney Dunn making a decision to close investigation, to not prosecute Sheriff Seals, within months of that, charges were drawn against Mark Lipton, Mr. Lipton, as you know, many of you know, for supposedly an unprovoked violent assault against his neighbor, assault and battery against his neighbor. And then there was an altercation between Mark and his neighbor. Interestingly, Mark reportedly tried to get a warrant against that neighbor. So, you know, you have Mark making the allegation that it was the neighbor that was the aggressor, the neighbor saying that Mark was the aggressor. At that point, you just have allegations. There's not been any trial. But interestingly, there was a decision made, and somehow the choice was made that Mark was the one that should be prosecuted, and his neighbor would be the complaining witness. Mark's attempt to get a warrant against the neighbor was stopped. That didn't happen. So, even at that early stage, there's a decision being made as to whose case should go forward, and there was a decision made that the case should go, the prosecution should go forward against Mark. Now, remember, this is only within months of the Attorney General Dunn making a decision that, based on Mark's complaints about his boss, a popular sheriff, you all know, probably know him, this... now, Mark, instead of being able to get an investigation and get a prosecution going, he's now fighting a prosecution himself. And we looked at the evidence that was presented used to convict Mark, and from the beginning, from the beginning of the charges being made to him to the end where the jury made a determination of guilty against Mark, there were contradictions in his story, in his neighbor's story, about what happened. We looked at the case, and the case against Mark seems to have been concocted. It's hard to believe. And even some people conclude that it's an outright laughable set of facts. You know, the way Mark's neighbor described what happened, it's difficult to believe. Whereas Mark has passed multiple polygraph examinations administered by professional polygraph examiners, and he's been... they have confirmed each time that he's telling the truth. Now, we also have this forensic evidence, scientific evidence, that from what we understand from experts would help prove that Mark was... is guilty or innocent. But there doesn't seem to be any Tennessee officials interested in gathering this scientific evidence that would help prove one way or another whether Mark is guilty or innocent. Now, just based on these circumstances, and we're going to have an opportunity to talk about this in detail, and perhaps there may be some aspect of the case that someone else wants to emphasize, or maybe in the course of questioning, there's an aspect of the case that I can help make clear to you. But just based on those circumstances alone, our organization was comfortable in saying, you know, this is a questionable... this isn't quite cold water. You know, this doesn't make a lot of sense, that, you know, we have a veteran law enforcement officer that would have his career derailed and, you know, disrupted his entire family, large family that he has to support, and now he's out of work based on this seemingly concocted story. And how, you know, prosecutors have discretion as to what cases that they're going to take and which cases that they're not going to take. And I read a news article, and in making the decision not to prosecute the sheriff based on what Mark had to say and what other evidence that was available that he supposedly covered up this DUI, the prosecutor, from my understanding, was of the opinion that we don't want to come in and disrupt someone's career and disrupt their lives unless we can be absolutely sure. But yeah, based on, you know, from the beginning to the end, very questionable evidence, the exact same thing was done with regard to Mark Lipton, former deputy sheriff, Mark Lipton. Now, the whole situation seems to me, and we can talk about this if anyone is not convinced, everyone will have an opportunity to talk about the facts, and it might be something that I'm not emphasizing enough, but based on my years as a practicing lawyer, as a good government advocate for the last more than a decade, the whole situation looked to the administrators of our group like a classic teaching you a lesson. Now, I know that many people have learned that lesson, and the lesson is keep your mouth shut. Okay? Keep your mouth shut about government misconduct. Else, you could find yourself on the receiving end of a very questionable criminal prosecution or a lot of circumstances that most people would want to avoid, a lot of trouble that we wouldn't want to bring into our lives. And what's interesting is that Tennessee, the state of Tennessee, has multiple laws on the book proclaiming the need for people to make good faith reports of government misconduct. They have multiple laws on the book that were passed by the Tennessee legislature that suggest that the people, the good people of Tennessee should come forward if in good faith they have evidence that someone associated with state government or any lower level of government in the state of Tennessee, that they're guilty of some type of misconduct. The law on the books say, "Come forward," and through these laws, the state of Tennessee assures us, assures its citizens, that we will protect you. This is what we want to have happen. This is good for everybody, for people in the community to feel free to come forward, and if they in good faith have a reasonable basis for believing there is government misconduct, there are state officials who are not doing what they're supposed to do, it's in our best interest for you to come forward, and we will protect you. Okay? But then the school bell rings, and the lesson seems to be, complain, and you are going to find yourself on the receiving end. You're going to find yourself dealing with a questionable prosecution. If necessary, you know, if the charges are not that strong, that's fine. We can... you can... you may find yourself dealing with arguably bogus charges. This is the lesson that seems to be... that's being communicated in light of how, you know, what happened to Mark and the timing of what happened to Mark. So, our organization, as a national organization, you know, we're concerned about all the states, what happens in all the states, and we're very concerned, we don't want the state of Tennessee to set a bad precedent. We don't want this type of lesson to catch a hole anywhere, because then you have a good chance that other states will start following this pattern. So, we went to the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility. That's the agency that disciplines attorneys, including prosecutors, and we essentially said, "We want you all to discourage this message that keep your mouth shut, you know, else you'll find yourself in harm's way." We want you to discourage that message by disciplining the prosecutors, Attorney General Dunn and his assistants, two of his assistants. We came together, we pulled together the rules and specific evidence that, in our view, made a good case that these prosecutors, that it was incompetent, that it was unreasonable, and it was even unethical for them to bring these charges, to take Mark's case to a conviction, either by offering a plea deal where he would essentially voluntarily convict himself or go into trial and have a jury find him guilty. And we were suggesting that it was unethical for the prosecutors to create that set of circumstances because it sent the wrong message. When you have someone who's tried to do the right thing and come forth with this evidence of government misconduct to find themselves within a few months facing a very questionable criminal prosecution himself, that sends a bad message out to everyone in the state of Tennessee, everyone across the nation, because it can be argued, it can be interpreted to be retaliation for Mark not keeping his mouth shut. And we need to discourage that type of message, and it was... and we pointed out the law that suggested that the prosecutors needed to take that into consideration and make a decision. Prosecutors don't have to prosecute all cases that are presented to them. You know, it's literally impossible to prosecute every alleged crime, so prosecutors have to decide which cases to take and which cases not to take. They made a decision not to prosecute Sheriff Seals. That is within their discretion. So, if you... as taxpayers, as people who live in this community, when you think of all the potential crime out there, to think that the prosecutors would make a decision that the best way to use their time and taxpayer money is to come in and disrile the life of an... of an, an experienced law enforcement officer who has a large family to support, to, to, um, take that case to trial based on questionable evidence from the, that's from the beginning to the end, has been full of questions, is inconsistent, is a story is hard to believe. Notice, I'm not saying one way or another who's telling the truth or not, who's not telling the truth. But when you have to make a decision as to what cases you should prosecute, does it, is it in the best interest of the people of Tennessee to, for the prosecutors to have made that decision to prosecute that case? Aren't, and, 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 and by doing that, aren't you sending out a message that this is what can happen to people who step forward and try to do the thing, right thing? There's that same thing that the Texas legislators have put forward time after time in their legislation that says, come forth, tell us this, to let us know. They didn't say be right, we're going to agree with you, but do, whatever you do, come forth and let us know if you have evidence of, of, of misconduct by a government official. We want that. It's good for everybody. We will protect you. But then within a few months of your own, a law, someone who's part of the legal establishment trying to do that, then they find themselves battling, uh, a very questionable criminal prosecution. So we went to the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility. And we said, you know, as a national group, we, we had local people involved. And we said, as a national group, it was negligent to take this case to conviction. This, and prosecutors have an obligation, just like all lawyers, to be reasonable, to be competent, to weigh the evidence, to weigh what's in the best interest, should we proceed with this case? And we took the position that they didn't do it in this case. It was incompetence to the point that they should be disciplined. It should be considered unethical. Now, how did the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility respond? Uh, and if you've had a chance, and we have, uh, our campaign fact sheet back on the table and it's a link to our campaign, uh, newsroom. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to look at the details, uh, please take a chance, take, take some time to go in and look at the, the specific ruling that we received. But I'll tell you what they essentially did was to suggest that, well, hey, we, this, this is up to the prosecutors. We don't have anything, we're not going to discipline them, we're not going to interfere with this. This is up to the prosecutors to decide how to handle this case. So, uh, you know, are the implications that we've identified, uh, in, in response to that is apparently, um, the state of Tennessee is taking the position that even though there's laws on the book that say that we want people to come forward and, and give evidence of, of government misconduct, if the prosecutors turn around and despite the fact that your state legislators have decided that, that it was in the best interest for them to pledge to protect people who do that, it's okay for the prosecutors to turn around and bring cases, questionable cases, that do just the opposite. Have people suspecting that if you do that, you're going to be punished. And if they make that decision, the state of Tennessee is saying, well, hey, you know, that's up to them. Okay? That, that's within their, uh, discretion. And believe, that's the lesson that, that a lot of people across the country are getting from what has happened to Mark. Um, and we can feel free to, to learn that lesson. As, as Tennessee residents, as people, uh, average Americans, we can just simply keep quiet. We have that choice and offer Mark up as a sacrifice. You know, to the evil warlock of retaliation. We can, we're free to do that. Because, uh, after all, you know, the lesson that, 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 that can be picked up on what happened to him is that's what happens when you come in and you say that something is wrong, that you don't like what's happening, that there's some misconduct, that this is not the way it's supposed to go. Uh, we see, we had that room full of people who have been fighting for justice. You know, I work with whistleblowers, um, all across the country, um, Serpico. Uh, all kinds of people who have come forth and done the right thing and had their life turned upside down. People who have gone from accomplished individuals to living in their car, being homeless. Because they came forth and, and, and brought evidence that, that, uh, food was contaminated. And as a result, uh, people die. You know, that there was corruption in, in law enforcement offices, you know, offices. And, and, uh, they came forth and they had their life turned around. So we advocate to protect those people for effective whistleblower protection. But the truth of the matter is anytime we tell average Americans about what happens and they see how these people, you know, their whole life is turned apart, they end up, uh, having all types of financial devastation. Uh, it scares people. And what happens is instead of thinking, okay, yeah, we'll stand up and we'll come forward with more evidence, people get inclined to think, well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to stay away from that situation. Okay? Cause I don't want them coming after me. That, that is a lesson that happens. And we, we all have the option of accepting that lesson. We can accept that lesson. Um, perhaps the, the, the man that, that Mark arrested for drug driving, you know, perhaps he kept, he keeps drinking and driving. And, and, you know, it may, perhaps he may injure someone the next time. And whoever is that injured person, uh, we, we could just let, let that person be offered up as a sacrifice. Um, I've been reading and it seems like, uh, in here at Sevier County, uh, there, there's been quite a few big settlements, big lawsuits alleging that there's some misconduct and, uh, some things are going wrong with the sheriff's department, other, uh, agencies of, of government here. And, um, in settling these cases, all the money that they're coming up with to defend them and settle them. If as a result of, of doing that, there's not money available for other government services, we can offer that up for sacrifice. You know, we have that choice. But, you know, I missed the town hall meeting. At which the, uh, they've some, they, the national town hall meeting where there was a decision reached to accept these bad, this bad government. And just hope that, that, you know, I don't, I'm not the next one offered up for sacrifice. I wasn't at, at that meeting where we decided that that's the way government's supposed to go in this country. But I tell you, after dealing with people on a national level, it seems like, you know, to, for a lot of people, that is the decision that has been made. You just better just be quiet and hope they don't come after you. But that is not the way American government is supposed to go, from my understanding. Now, you know, notice, we don't have, uh, some pub- public official here promising us anything. Um, our organizations don't get government money. The, the organizations that you saw me, uh, list on, on the screen. Uh, we don't have wealthy people, uh, paying the bills. I try to convince my husband that he's wealthy so he loosened up on the purse string, but we, you know, he keeps telling me this is not true. Uh, he's a lot less wealthy since we got married, but anyway. We don't have, you know, their whole, what's the popular name, Koch Brothers, you know, there's no, there, we don't have that type of bankroll. We're just average people coming together, paying the bills, showing up and saying, uh, you know, I don't think so. I don't think so. Uh, who's running this operation? You know, maybe, maybe there's some bureaucrat that needs a term out. You know, we have, we are legislators, the people we do elect have decided that it was in the best interest of the state of Tennessee to encourage its citizens to come forth with evidence of government misconduct. And to say now we just have to leave it up to the prosecutors and if they make, turn that, turn, turn that, uh, protection into a joke, and there's, there's nothing that we can do, uh, about it, that's what the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibility is saying. And, um, so now is the time for us, as average Americans, to say, well, what do you think about it? Does that sound like good government to you? Is that the way we think things should go? Um, the Law Project has a theater for justice. It's one of our projects. We have an actual theater for justice. And if necessary, we will play situations like this out on a stage. Uh, some friends will come to town hall meetings, some won't. They may come to a play. And that's why we created a theater, theater for justice. Uh, hey, if I, I could sing, I would write songs and, and go to nightclubs and sing about the concerns of average Americans and our desire for good government and the fact that we don't want our state prosecutors to be sending out the wrong message that if you come forth and you, you report some powerful government official and frankly, anybody that's a government official is powerful in this country. Uh, and if you come forth and you try to, in good faith, expose misconduct, you're going to find yourself on the receiving end of something pretty bad. Um, if I, if I could, I'd go sing in nightclubs and, and, and convey the message that no, that's not good government. That's not the way we want things to go here in the state, in, 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 in the, in the United States of America. The point I'm trying to emphasize is that the call for good government needs to be constant and it needs to meet people where they are. Not everybody's going to come on the internet to find that message. If, that, you know, not, if, if major media is not covering it, you are not going to find it in major media. Uh, if necessary, put together a campaign fact sheet and, and pass it out. Town, from time to time, you need to get off the internet and you need to assemble with your neighbors. That's why we wanted to have this town hall meeting. We, because we're, our, our organization is of the view that sometimes you've got to sit down face to face and talk with your neighbor and say, is this the way we wanted to go? Uh, and again, the, the created a lot of different avenues. We have an organization that reaches out to college, uh, students. And our message to them is that when, when government, when there's serious waste, when there's serious fraud and abuse, that compromises your future. So that's another way we get the message out. The point is average Americans just need to be engaged and be willing to talk in terms of what we want. This meeting is a discussion among all of us as to what we want, whether what we're seeing here in Tennessee is consistent in our mind with good government. And then once we make that decision together, we're going to go and convey that message tomorrow in Brentwood, Tennessee. We're going to make signs, we're going to paint signs. I know my sign is going to say, protect good police officers, could, could protect good deputy sheriffs, not, uh, incompetent prosecutors. So we're going to, that's another way of communicating, uh, to our, our neighbors. Uh, we're going to have a rally tomorrow. Then a delegation of us are going to go meet with some legislators on Friday. Uh, and then we're going to put all this on the internet. We're going to keep the message out there and that's how you bring about good government.